Welcome to the Smithfield Town Planning Board Meeting for July 17, 2025. Initially, in terms of the emergency evacuation health notification, in case of emergency, there are two main exits out the chambers. The first is to the left side of the stage, up the stairs, through the doorway and down the stairway, out the backside of the town hall. The second is out the back of the chambers, to the exit doorway, to the stairway out front of the town hall. Men's facilities are through the back of the chambers, past the stairway, around the corner on the right. The ladies' facilities are through the back door of the chamber, straight up the stairs on the left. Please do not use the elevator in times of emergency. Initially, a review of the meeting minutes for June 26, 2025. Does anyone have any proposed additions and/or changes after a review of the minutes? You certainly were here. Any other proposed changes?
I have a 2009, what care breakdowns, yes, practical, when they want to press, they are losing, I think they can see the word not, not using.
It's a felt by rack option.
Changes in minutes, on the impact of the, both the first item, the agenda, the next, last, or, or stating, one way of extension, the whole on portion is a sudden statement in one of extension, and then working entirely, who are your extensions?
Does anyone recall having? Any further comments?
Under page 11, I'm not sure exactly where, so I have to review the video one more time, but I believe at the last town council meeting, one of the council persons stated that, attorney broker stated that, that they could proceed with the project without changing his own. And I have to review the minutes, but I think I'd like to just make a note of that somehow.
I don't have a recollection, but let's make a note of it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a note of it, that, it would be in the video, I did not have a chance to check that.
What was the, what did you want to make a note of?
The, for those amendments, there's an ongoing, for, questioned by the heads of the street, I was watching the town council last night, and one councilwoman, Rachel Tapi, stated that she reviewed the video at least three times, and that attorney broker stated that they could proceed with the project without a change. So I guess, pretty good, I don't see any minutes, but I'd like the video checked for reference.
Okay, to confirm that was stated at your meeting.
Yes, at our meeting, yes, exactly. She was reviewing the video of our meeting prior to the town council meeting on this.
Okay, any other, any other proposed changes or amendments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the, approve the minutes of the June meeting with all the amendments just mentioned.
Do we have, all in favor? Aye, all not in favor? The ayes have it. All business, Whipple Woods.
Just mention that Member Alexander has to abstain.
Whipple Woods, ID 2203, master plan review, motion for an extension of the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from this now.
Okay, noted.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kelly Morris Salvatore, with offices in Providence, Rhode Island. I'm here representing Phoenix Development, which is the new owner of this property. Some of you may remember that this property received master plan approval for a 14 lot conservation development on September 8, 2022. It was recorded on September 27, 2022. It was vested for a two-year period until September 27, 2024. The applicant at the time requested and received its first by right extension to September 27, 2025. So tonight, I am asking for the second and final by right extension on this project. Now, with regard to the annual review that's required by the statute, we want to report to you that the property was sold to my client, and we have been working diligently on probably an amended master plan. We've met with the planning staff and the building officials, zoning official recently. We're not quite ready to submit an amended master plan, but we think the town will like it better. So we're looking for the by right extension, just to preserve my client's rights until we come back with an amended master plan.
Any questions of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, the new owner is who?
Phoenix Development LLC.
And you said the town would like it better?
Well, we hope so. We're still working on it, so I can't really tell you what it is, but, you know, I know that there were issues about where the lots were situated, and so we're trying to, you know, we're trying to work through some things.
Yeah, it was with some of the neighbors and the board itself, there was a great concern about the initial concepts, and with the approval, there were conditions that were put in, accepted by the then developer.
Right, so we're going to do our best to make some changes. You know, I can't promise anything, but we are working with the staff, and we're hopeful that we can have a little bit better of a plan for you.
Any, may I ask, any idea when you might be back in, more, more, for you?
It depends on a couple of things. Like I said, we're working with staff, we're working through some of the issues relating to conservation development pertaining to the inclusionary zoning issues. So, you know, I would say it won't be a couple months, maybe?
Thank you.
Any other questions of the board members? Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the extension requested.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, all not in favor? The ayes have it.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. New business, Zero Cross Street in Shamrock Lane, ID 2510, minor subdivision pre-application.
So, Mr. Chair, this is back before your board tonight, simply to provide a recommendation to the town council as to whether to purchase the property that was outlined to you in the couple of previous months, as this matter was discussed. The initial history behind it was when you originally looked at this probably two months ago. One of the plans that was being looked at had a big swath of property owned by what was called Hoxie Farm, and there was a concern that if the board granted a, approved a possible sale, what was going to happen? But when it came back to you last month, it was discussed that that big area to the east of these properties is actually Olivia's Forest, and the matter was reviewed with the town manager last month. So what we had failed to do at that time when we were reviewing this is to provide this board the opportunity to make a recommendation to the town council, because now the town council has to hold a public hearing on it, and I believe the plan is to have the public hearing at some point in September. To your board for a review. Just, I have a couple of items to keep, to clarify, because I know there was this concern about, well, if we did this, what could be built? Mr. Conti was here that night, and my understanding is he had no plans to build some 16-unit development, and in fact, that swath of property there, that's sort of a pie shape in the north, and it swings down to the south, is only 56,000 square feet. If that lot was to be built, it has to be subdivided with the house that's already on it, and even if a two-family could be built, there would have to be a small variance on square footage. And the other lot that says new lot one, area 20,000 square feet, that's a single-family home presentation from what we've understood. So the town would sell that strip of land and buy a piece from Mr. Conti so they can have parking, additional parking, and organize the parking better for Olivia Woods and hopefully Whipple Field.
Do we, do we need to open this for public comment?
No.
Counsel?
This is just a recommendation to the town council. Mr. Boyd, or any person in the public will have a right to comment on this directly at the town council meeting, when the town council is actually going to make a decision on this. It's not a public hearing.
Town Council, Michael Ionati, Smithfield Town Council. Town Council passed an ordinance last year, giving the public the right to speak on any agenda item for any board, and also on the agenda item itself, in addition to the public comment that's at the end of each meeting.
I'm familiar with a public comment at the end of the meeting, I'm not familiar. Do you have a copy of the ordinance? Does anyone have the ordinance with?
I don't have it with me.
I'll try to pull it up.
I was a sponsor of it, so I know what it says. I'll leave that up to counsel.
I do remember, at least what I remember presented is at the end, and not necessarily at the, but.
Mr. Ionati indicates is both, at the end and, Mr. Monk.
Mr. Chairman, in the meantime, can I ask a few questions of counsel and the planner? On this project?
Yes, let me ask a question of the solicitor before we do that. Let's assume there is no ordinance to the effect that anyone can speak, is there anything wrong with allowing someone to speak?
There's nothing wrong with allowing someone to speak, but it's the standard protocol, if it's not a public hearing, it's, the public hearing is where someone usually speaks on an item. If, if you're going to allow public to speak on something that's not a public hearing such as this, where you're just making a recommendation to the council, you can, as a chair, you should provide limitations of how long they could speak, because you don't want us to turn into an evidentiary hearing, people contesting it in different matters, because now you're getting into an area that's beyond what the board is charged to do.
Is that something we vote on, or do I make the call? Whether we're going to allow someone to speak?
So I'll defer to the Councilman Ionati, because he drafted it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Out of an abundance of caution, I think it's, out of an abundance of caution, I think it would be appropriate then to allow comment, and then.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tapi is here too, she actually initiated this ordinance, I think it's an excellent ordinance. Basically, the chair has to allow public comment, has to allow anyone to comment, but the chair can set limitations of time, et cetera, on the, so that, and the number of people, but everybody has to have the right to, to comment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a councilperson, or either councilperson, to supply a copy of that ordinance to our planning department and the solicitor, so that we can have it available to us at the next meeting or subsequent meetings?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
They should have already given to you, but I'll definitely get it to you now.
Thank you.
In fact, in fact, after the ordinance was passed, a notice was sent out to all of the boards and commissions, that they all had to have public comment at the end of the meetings.
That's, we know of that, and we have incorporated that.
But also, the public has, now has the right to comment on any particular agenda item on the agenda.
That has not been relayed to us, so.
So every meeting is an open?
That's what it sounds like, every, every issue.
Every agenda meeting is an open meeting.
But it does not require a public notice to, a butt is within 200 feet.
No, it, no, it does not.
So, it, it acts as like that, but it doesn't have the, doesn't carry the notice requirements that go with it.
No, it's just, it's a right given to the public for any public board, any board or commission that's meeting in the town.
Did someone have a question? Mike, did you have a question, or was that answered?
About this undertaking, about this undertaking, could the planner or solicitor quickly go over, there's some kind of, what exactly is transpiring? I heard that part of this deal was a swap, but then part of it was the town's actually working out some money to purchase some land, and also, they have a grant. Could, could we just go over like, what, what, what property is being swapped, and what property is being purchased from Mr. Conti? I got, I got my plot map for you.
AP 23 Lot 67A is what will be purchased by the town.
It's the lower, the lower left of the map, which would be in the southeast, right?
Got you, okay.
Where the intersection where Whipple.
Got it, okay. And then there's a strip of land that looks like it's going to provide access to that triangular portion that you were just talking about?
Crescent, correct, that S sumo shape that leads into Shamrock.
Right, right, so that's, so we're purchasing the lower, the lower portion?
Larger section, yeah.
And then, so, we're, we're pushing, is it purchased, is he knocking off on the price of what we're purchasing from him, because we're allowing this strip of land to transfer anyways?
I don't have an answer for that, so I do not know. I do know that this is approximately, going to be paid for, 50% Rhode Island EM grant.
Yeah, so there was an agreed upon purchase price for that property, based upon what you have, and this goes back at least a year and a half now. So whatever, the whole thing was done together as one, and it, the purchase price was all based upon the entire deal. So there was no, there was no money involved, because you give me this, give me that, it was just put together, and there was an agreeable price with the previous town manager.
Okay, I won't waste anybody's time any further. I think I just was coming from my view as a citizen taxpayer.
Well, I know one of the board members wanted to concern about what could be done with that property that had, was going to have access to, was, I don't know if it's U. Catherine or?
I was concerned that they could put some multifamily homes up in there.
All right, so what are we hearing tonight about that, or what's on the recommendation part?
So, I know the town manager has spoken to the owner of the property, of what his intentions are, which I'll allow the town manager to address, but from the standpoint of the analytical side of zoning or planning, that lot you see is AP 23 Lot 61.
Yes, okay, can you read it?
It is, it right now is on Hill Street, it already has a house on it, it's at the end of the street, it's a, in the north corner, it's a pie-shaped piece, and then it swings down, that's AP 61. That lot is 58,000 square feet, or 59,000. That lot, right now, already has a single-family structure on it, so it can't be developed with another structure. So if anything was to be developed, there would have to be a planning application to this board for a minor development, to split that lot, so that the house currently existing has 20,000 square feet, and then the new lot would have, obviously, 20,000 less square feet for about 38,000. In that zone, which is an odd 20 med, you need 20,000 square feet, multifamily is allowed, but you need 40,000 square feet for a two-family. Most likely, the intent would be probably to put a two-family there, those other houses on that street are all four families or close to it, or multifamily at least, so you would potentially have a zoning request to this board as a unified development for a couple of thousand square feet, leave an area to put a two-family. The other part of this project is below, it says new lot one, area 20,000 square feet, my understanding is that would be for a single-family home. So you're looking at, based on what I can see, potentially being requested, from a reasonable standpoint, at least to be requested, not coming and saying, I want a five-family on 38,000 square feet, a duplex in a single-family home. The property to the right of that pie shape, and to the right of that S string that would be sent to Conti is Olivia's Forest, so that's owned by the Smithfield Land Trust, so it cannot be developed.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment. Anyone that would like to be heard, please come forward. We state, it's just pub, public comment, I don't think we need to swear you in for State your name, please, and your address.
Fort James Break Street. I was on the board at the time when this first came up, and I thought it was a good idea, but then I looked at it, I heard Mr. Monk speak about it, a couple of people, I went and looked at the area that we're going to gain for parking, which could be useless, without barriers, and the responsibility of backing out into oncoming traffic over there, for the amount of cars, the risk factor, there could be a lot of danger over there. That's an embankment that goes down in there. I don't think the risk of what we're going to swap, potentially lose versus the parking spaces that we're going to gain on there, I don't see how the town is going to gain, that Mr. Conti will gain on this, and it could be a potential problem, and the what-ifs, it could happen, this could happen, nothing can happen if we just deny it, just say, it's a bad idea. And I think the board should think, look at the safety value of it, the parking, what you're going to gain at, before it goes to a board, there would be a possibility to be a 3-2 vote and go one way, just because somebody wants something on it. The, this board has a responsibility to not let that happen, not let it go to, even if I was on the council myself, that's what, that's what this job is here, for you to look at, what is the right thing to recommend to me, what I should do, not what I should do. This board should recommend what I should do, not the other way around. And I would look into the safety reasons of that parking, if they're going to park, they're going to be pulling in, my main thing I looked at, there's no guardrails, it's a stiff drop, if they're going to back out to oncoming traffic, which is illegal, how are you going to park a car in there? What are we going to gain out of that? Like Mr. Monk said, or there's a possibility we could lose by building in there, the possibility is a possibility, just forget about it, it's not, or look into it, I looked into it, the parking is not beneficial to the town, not beneficial, not without all kinds of work to be done over there. Who's going to take care of responsibility? During the season, where there's no football in the window, or baseball, something like that, are the people on the Hill Street going to park in there? Are they going to be forced not to park in there? I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities, I came up with about 50 different things that could possibly go wrong over there. Tagging cars, I mean, how are you going to, is the police department going to go over there? It can't be parked there, it's town property, you can't park in the park, you're going to park over here, how are you going to park on Hill Street? You think the people over Hill Street are not going to park over there? You're going to put a gate on there, how much money are you going to spend over there for seven cars? I would just like this board, my personal opinion, to do what its job is, and make a decision, not let the council make.
Well, we're just making a recommendation.
Well, a recommendation, that's something, the recommendation, what would a recommendation would be, whether to go through the job or not do it, that's what I'm saying, I would recommend it not to do it. Or make a decision to look into it further before you even make a decision. I wouldn't make a decision, I would try, further conversations with each other, and then make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, the original intent of the property was for a parking area for the ball fields, that is no longer the intent. The intent, and I've been over there with the DPW director, and our DPW department is going to regrade that, we're going to put a barrier where the river is, everything's going to be regraded, we think we can get 14 to 20 cars in there, they'll be able to turn around, because they'll have, it'll be kind of in a circular area, so people can back out and pull out forward, so as it stands today is not the end result of this project. And the other thing is, we only have two or three parking spaces on Ridge Road for the other side of the trail, and that's problematic, because once more people get there, they're parking out on the road. So I was against this at first, until I walked the whole thing with Mike Phillips and the DPW director, and, you know, we repurposed, if, if people from the ball field want to park there, that's fine, but we think it's, it's more of a recreational area, an open space is, is, is better use of that, with the, we're not going to get into paving it and putting drainage in, we're going to keep it in its natural state, as a natural parking area, with the proper safety barriers in place, we're well aware of the river and whatnot, so the intent is to make it safe and keep it natural, obviously, if somebody wants to park up there, it is going to be a parking lot. If, and the other thing we talked about is potentially putting on the street side a sidewalk with a crossing area over to the ball field, it seems like it's going to have a lot of use, but the intention is more for open space recreation, and that's kind of the goal of this project right now, and especially since we got 100. kind of the goal of this project right now. And especially since we got $117,000 coming from B E M for this project, which cannot, that has to be used for this project, or we're going to lose it. So, that's the intent, it's more open space and recreation at this point, but it will offer parking for people to utilize.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think there's, I think there appears to be a benefit to, they're going to, the graded, they're going to deal with the way it looks right now, and the access, and then there is 14 to 20 spots, which I think is pretty significant for not having anything there, so. I think it's a, I think, at this point, I think it's a good recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend this project for approval by the town council.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? Anyone abstain? The ayes have it. Moving to Rainforest Realty LLC, ID 2511, major land development, pre-application. Chris, is this, is this, is this a public hearing? What, public comment? Mr. Monty, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Michael Monty of Sageregan and Thayer, on behalf of the applicant and owner of Rainforest Realty LLC. I'm joined this evening by Lynn Small of Northeast Engineers, Philip Penn, the proprietor of Rainforest Realty LLC, and our landscape architect is on the way, and I understand she'll be here in 10 or 15 minutes. Before I begin, I have the site plans on a thumb drive, I don't know if I'm able to put those on the screen for you all.
You are.
All right, excuse me a moment. All right, I think we should have everything we need now on the screen, or just the current condition plans. But to reiterate, this is just a concept plan review for an affordable housing development, made under, under the comprehensive. Perfect, thank you for that. Made under the comprehensive permit regulations, which allows an applicant for an affordable housing development to get a fairly substantial density bonus, and submit one application to the planning board for virtually all of its municipal approvals, so everything except for D E M, C R M C, if it were applicable, D O T, all municipal approvals, and adjustments handled by this board. And as part of a concept plan review, the idea is really for us to have an opportunity to present this to the board for the first time, so you can get your eyes on it, and elicit feedback from the board before we move to the formal hearing, when we would ask for a vote for the project. So I'm going to go over some high-level details of the project, and then Lynn Small, our engineer, will go over the existing site conditions, some of the site constraints, and why we're proposing the layout we're proposing. And then you'll also hear from our landscape architect, and some of the preservation features we're trying to integrate in this development. So this is on Douglas Pike, it's 445 and 435 Douglas Pike, it's the current location of the 12 acres banquet hall, some of you might be familiar with that, that hall. The site is actually two lots currently, it's about 14 and a half acres, I think it's 14.62, so just over that. The plan that we're currently looking at would be 24 individual structures that are all duplexes, so there would be 48 units total, and 25% of those would be designated for low and moderate income housing, which pursuant to regulations is between 80 and 120% area median income. So a lot of people, you know, question what is affordable housing in this context, that's what it is. So the affordable units would be integrated throughout the site, and actually, what's interesting here is, on a land area this big, 14.62 acres, we would actually be entitled to 73 units, if the site could allow for it. But because so much of the southern site is wetland, we're actually constrained not by what the regulations would allow in terms of density, but on what the site can allow due to so much of it being wet. So we're proposing 48 units, but theoretically, if you could make it work on a lot of this size, you would be allowed upwards of 70. But again, that's, that's not this application. In terms of the adjustments, and I'm actually going to go to the proposed condition plan, because I think that's more helpful on the board. In terms of adjustments, which you're allowed to grant as part of a comprehensive permit, most of them just have to do with the proximity of the structures to one another. So you have minimum side yard and minimum yard depth requirements, and also distance between structures requirements. So we're going to be seeking waivers from most of those standards. So to take an example of one adjustment, we'll need, under the regulations in the planned development area for a multifamily, structures need to be at least 20 feet apart. The fire code mandates that structures be at least 10 feet apart of this kind. Certain of these structures are going to be 15 feet apart. So that's a five-foot adjustment we would be required to seek. Another performance standard adjustment that we're going to be looking for has to do with the fact that the site is not serviced by public sewers, so there are going to be septic systems throughout the site, and in pursuant to your municipal ordinance, we would need an adjustment there as well. Minimum side yard requirements, they're not going to be 30 feet apart in every instance, as you can see on the proposed concept. So these are exemplary of the type of adjustments we're going to be required to seek, once we get to the preliminary plan stage. In terms of the project overall, when you're looking at an affordable housing complex under the comprehensive permit regulation, there's sort of a shifting standard of review. So if the community has less than 10% of affordable housing inventory, then the standard of review is not particularly exacting. If you're above that 10%, then there's more flexibility within the community. Presently, Smithfield, pursuant to the latest publicly available data, has just 5.85% of affordable housing. So that, that's sort of more flexible standard for the applicant applies, and there are substantial comments in your comprehensive land use plan about the need for both affordable housing and market rate housing, and that those are explicit goals of the community. So by creating 36 market rate houses, or units, I should say, and 12 LMI units, which again, is 80 to 120% area median income, we would be helping Smithfield achieve those stated goals. In terms of the process here, we still need our project team to get what's called a letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing, where we present a financial pro forma and other materials to verify that this site, this project, this candidate are eligible to do an affordable housing complex on this site. We expect that'll be forthcoming, it's not particularly challenging to get that letter of eligibility, especially when you're not seeking any sort of federal, state, or municipal grants in order to make it work. Right now, we anticipate private financing, so not anticipating any issues there. Once we get the letter of eligibility, we'll return to this board for preliminary plan review. So that's kind of my high-level commentary of what the project is. Unless there are particular questions of me right now, I'd ask our engineer to stand up and speak to some of the existing conditions, site constraints, and the layout we're proposing. Are there any questions for me in particular?
Are these two floor units?
No, I believe they're proposed as, as single stories currently, but we have a mock-up, so.
How many bedrooms?
Still under review. Yep. And again, at this level, we don't have, you know, a fully fleshed out that you might see at a master plan or preliminary plan, it's conceptual. But if there are thoughts about number of bedrooms, single story versus two-story that the board has, we would love to get that feedback tonight, so that we can come back with something after hearing this sports commentary. Any other questions for me?
The, the need for the various relief, is that to fit the number of units?
Yes.
Because you conceivably, the project could go forward without the, those requirements if you have some less units.
Yes, that's theoretically possible, it might not work from a financing perspective to make this affordable housing development work, but, but that's correct. Without those adjustments, you wouldn't be able to get this many units on this site. Lynn. So Lynn, would you just tell the board a little bit about yourself, your professional experience, and then walk us through the existing site conditions, site constraints, and proposed layout?
Sure. Lynn Small, I have Northeast Engineering Consultant, we're in Middletown, Rhode Island. I've been there for 27 years. Went to Roger Williams University, I'm a registered professional engineer, I'm also a class-three licensed designer for wastewater.
Excuse me, can you speak a little louder?
Sorry about that. It's because you had him before me. It's very good. Do you want me to go over that? I, I'm a registered professional engineer in Rhode Island, I'm also a class-three licensed designer for wastewater design, and I've been at Northeast Engineers for 27 years.
So, thank you, Lynn. Did you just walk the board through, we're looking at the existing condition plans now, I always think that's a good place to start.
Sure thing. My office has in-house survey and civil engineering, we did the boundary survey and existing topography, we retained a Rhode Island registered wetland biologist who flagged the wetland that you see there, and we submitted that to the state of Rhode Island for an edge verification. So, the land area and developable land area calculations that we're presenting to you are accurate. We also did class-four soil evaluations throughout the site, so the septic systems that we show you are possible, as shown.
And where specifically, Lynn, are the wetlands, primarily down here on the southern portion of the lot?
Yeah, so those series of arrows all over the place point into the wetland. I mean, there's a couple that are pointing out, just because there's so many on this project, but most of the site that's planned south is, is wet. As you go through that wetland, there's some high ground on the other side, but in, in Smithfield, you're not allowed to count that till you, your developable land area unless it's contiguous, which it's not. That wetland completely breaks off the other highland on the south side. The property right now is accessed from a curb cut off Douglas Pike that extends into the property, and there is an event facility here, where they host weddings and other events, there's an outdoor pavilion. There's also a residence at the very far east of the property, with its own septic system, right now. We do have public water that comes in from the site, from Douglas Pike, I believe it's through a master meter, that services the existing development that, that's there right now.
I'm going to talk a little bit into the proposed concept plan here, could you walk us through this, and would you like this first view or the second one?
The second one. I think you don't need to see the actual curb cut, we're going to be probably maintaining it, the existing curb cut, potentially enhancing it, but then as you travel into the site, all of your improvements are in this general vicinity, which is why we created this zoomed-in view, so that you can see it in a little bit better detail. What we have shown here is a 24-foot wide driveway that comes in, that will provide access to all of the proposed improvements. We did a looped roadway system, it's intended that this is all remains private, so it wouldn't be a public roadway, per se, that the town needs to maintain. We do provide some parking along it, each of the residents, their duplexes, has shown having garage and parking in their driveway, but then we do provide some parking throughout the project, so that we don't have parking on the street.
And those, for example, are located, just so everybody can see, that, those would be these kinds of areas.
Correct.
Designated on the plan. In terms of the dimensions of this, of this proposed roadway, do you, do you know what those are?
The roadway's 24 feet wide. So, natural fire code is a minimum of 20 feet, but 24 feet is a lot more comfortable. You don't want to go too wide, because if your roads are really wide, people drive faster. So, 24 feet, in my experience, with a land development project like this, is very comfortable, but it's not inviting for fast traffic.
And could you speak a little bit about drainage and stormwater, and what we're going to look at in these areas of the plan?
Yeah, so basically, what we've done is put some placeholder areas for stormwater. We have not done a full drainage design on this project. We do know that we will have to provide water quality treatment for each of the units, and for the new impervious surfaces for the roadway, and then we're going to have to mitigate that stormwater before it discharges towards the wetland. This project, before it comes before you for preliminary, will at least have started the state permit process with freshwater wetlands and ripdies. Since we have over an acre of disturbance, we'll have those two state permit requirements.
And so the, for those drainage areas, these are still conceptual and this could change, but that's these sort of crosshatched areas that you see throughout the site plan, correct?
Correct. And that particular one that you had pointed to was in an area that's closer to a wetland, and that is because it's already disturbed area. Under the new freshwater wetland regulations, you have a certain buffer that's required, and most of those buffers got bigger when they changed the rules. But at the same time, if it's already maintained, you are kind of grandfathered into that.
And pursuant to state and municipal regulations that were required to make sure there's no additional runoff, or was this, correct?
Correct. So we'll have to run through those state-regulated storms, you want to 10, no, you want 25 and 100-year storms, and ensure that we have no increase in your peak runoff from existing conditions to those receiving wetland areas, or any abutting properties, but I believe this site drains entirely to that wetland, and not to any abutters, potentially some to Douglas Pike.
And can you talk a little bit about wastewater?
Yes, so what we have proposed on this project is a few, I think it's three, might be four, community septic systems. So we'll collect the wastewater, and potentially, we, I don't know if we're going to, you know, designate certain. So we'll collect the wastewater and potentially, I don't know if we're going to designate certain residences, each septic or will dose each leach field a certain amount. I haven't gone to that level of design yet, but you'll have basically a pre-septic tank and pretreatment pot system at each building, which will go into what feels like a municipal collection system. And then, because it'll be a series of manholes and sewer mains, and then they will discharge into these community septic systems. What will happen is we will have homeowners association in place, and I've done this type of design before, so it's not something that we're proposing for the first time here in Smithfield. I have these projects in place, several of them in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, that are proving to be quite successful. You use the same pretreatment company, and they maintain all of the pretreatment systems. It goes into a community leach field, and then there's an operation and maintenance agreement for that, and that's all paid for by the homeowners association.
Were there any other site characteristics, Lynn, that you'd like to speak about, in particular, why so much of this is located at the north end of the site?
Certainly. So obviously, the wetlands is pushing us to a certain point of the site. We also have along the northern boundary some pretty steep slopes, and there is all residential homes up there. So we wanted to pull the project in and provide some buffer around the perimeter so that this project is a little bit more separated from those abutting developments. So that kind of pushes us towards, we also wanted to focus on, you know, redeveloping near area disturbed areas so that we're not clearing a bunch of trees to build this particular project.
And is it fair to say that, I mean, I don't have the exact number, but about half of the site is undisturbed pursuant to these plans? Would that be fair to say?
At least half the site would be undisturbed for this project, yeah.
So of the 14 and 1/2 plus 8 curbs, you know, more than 7 and 1/2 are undisturbed?
Correct.
Are there any questions for our engineer at this time?
Kathryn?
Yes. I would prefer to maintain the rural look of Douglas Pike as you go up that way. Right now, you can't see the building that's up there, so my preference would be to have a one-story building that's hidden from view from the highway.
And I mean, you can see that we have several hundred feet from Douglas Pike before you even get to the first building, so we are doing that. And right now, the building that we're looking at using is one-story. That seems to be the market right now, is people want to have a one-story so they don't have stairs to do.
And I'm putting up the conceptual rendering that we have presently, and Pamela Rogers is going to speak next, but I understand that this sort of mock-up is designed largely around the Western Valley site that was developed probably years on the west floor.
Are they on slabs?
That's a good question, which I don't have an answer for yet. My experience, if the project can handle it, is that the basements are good for providing the extra space for storage, but we would want to consider, you know, it is comprehensive with the low-income housing, so there's that piece that we have to keep an eye on. And then you also have elevated water tables out here and ledge situations, so there's a number of factors that we need to consider before we can say, yes, they'll have basements, or no, they won't. But I do know on other projects, the developer is elected to put basements just to provide those homeowners with more space for storage.
Michael?
First, let me compliment you on your package. It's very attractive, and I was considering things that sometimes this board has to pull teeth on to get, pull teeth to get answers. But anyways, the design of the plan took a stab at putting in a walking trail. Do you think that's a possible concept that's maybe doable?
Yeah, so we're going to have Pamela Rogers, who designed that, speak next, our landscape architect. So that might be a question better suited to her, but it's certainly something we intend to do, and it's not within any of the wetlands, so it should certainly be possible.
I think the single-story concept is excellent, too.
Mr. Chi, I had a couple of questions. Can I?
Yes.
To the engineer. My question first is this on your homeowners association that you mentioned that you already have in place for these other septic systems. One is, in terms of how those homeowners associations are set up, do the LMI units have the same condominium HOA fees as the regular units? How is that all set up?
That's a good question.
Because my concern is they may not have the same money that some of the other owners have, and now they don't have as many rights to foreclose on their property because it's limited to who they can then turn it out and sell it to.
Well, my office will investigate how all the [inaudible].
What have you experienced in the one that you've already done?
The one that I had done does not have LMI on site.
Second, in terms of the area?
Hang on a second. Go ahead. Can I chime in on that? So usually what happens with these shared septic systems is it goes to the entire homeowners association. Doesn't matter if there's one or 10. It all gets sent to one meter, and everyone pays the electric or the maintenance fee.
Yes, what we don't know is if that's an equal distribution or if the LMI units don't have a rated fee.
So we'll talk to Rhode Island Housing about, you know, how they typically would deal with that in a HOA and be prepared to speak to it at the next stage.
The other thing I wanted to mention, too, should probably put a reserve area for these systems, same size as the system you're going to plan, because for the most part, you've got this many people in here, you know these systems are not going to last, especially when you're shoved in like that. Like, I can already tell the plan I'm looking at right now, this isn't going to be the plan we see in a couple of months.
Well, you're correct in that this is a concept-level plan, so we have to do the engineering. What I've seen on some of our shared septic systems is that you have some homes that have a higher occupancy and some of them have a really low occupancy, and you end up with a better controlled flow of an equal, more equal wastewater. So one septic on Lot 2 isn't overwhelmed because that guy has six people living there, whereas Lot 1 has one person, you know? So sometimes it kind of works out because it evens things out.
Any other engineering questions or comments at this time?
The actual area, the footprint where all these units are, because you mentioned it's about seven acres undisturbed, but what's the actual acreage of where these units are sitting on?
I do not have that number with me tonight.
I'm just trying to get an idea for this board so they know how much area they're actually dealing with, although it's only 48 units.
Do we have the lot coverage calculation on this land set?
I know we have developable land area.
We spent a lot of time working on the developable land area, but let me see if we put this on the site plan. So we'll be prepared to come back with that data for you. I think because we're so much under what would be allowed for lot coverage, we didn't emphasize that on the plans.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, is it 48 units on two acres, or is it 48 units on the other seven acres?
Can I bring up one more thing?
Sure.
One other thing I'd like to mention is, due to the influx of school-aged children, my preference would be to have just two bedrooms.
Right now, these septic systems are sized for two-bedroom units.
That also may be a constraint, so...
Our septic system is controlling our density.
All right, I'll break it down on Pamela Rogers of this. And could you tell the board a little bit about yourself and then walk us through the design that you've prepared for this project?
Sure. My name is Pamela Rogers. I'm a registered landscape architect in Rhode Island in Massachusetts. I have a small firm in Jamestown, Rhode Island, Verde Design. I've been practicing for at least 20 years now, so, and I started out as a water culturist, so I have a, you know, pretty good plant knowledge.
Excellent. So what have you come up with here? Could you walk the board through?
So I think my initial site visit with Philip, the client, was that we really wanted to keep the rural character of the property. It's really kind of unique with the exposed ledge, the trees, the clearings, and I think one of the things that we talked about is that, you know, there isn't a lot of space, you know, for a lot of open space with the configuration of the units. So that's why we talked about doing this walking path, so people could really appreciate the property more because there's so much of it, there's so much natural wooded area, there's a brook that runs through it, and I just think it would just be a small path, but it could be, you know, a very unique thing to the property in addition.
And are there any significant trees or features that we're intending to preserve pursuant to this plan?
So it's actually interesting because the center area where the development really is, is pretty much cleared already because they've been using it for events and open space. There is one Linden tree that's quite mature that we would really like to save, and we noted it on the plan to protect it.
So that you can see here. And then could you speak a little bit about the entryway off of Douglas Pike?
Yeah, so the entryway is not very significant. I mean, there's a pretty large sign there now, but no landscaping. Most of the landscaping is outside of the right-of-way and, you know, further into the property, and then it becomes very wooded. So we'd like to propose doing something that really stands out a little bit more, something with stone, with the sign recessed in, with some lighting, and then adding some trees and, you know, to make it look a lot more aesthetically pleasing and welcoming.
And then you put together this mock-up, correct?
I did, yeah.
And could you just speak a little bit to this?
So this is an example of what the residence would look like. It's a concept that they used on another property that was pretty successful. As you can see, it's just one level, but I think the idea is to really, you know, fit these units into the landscape with trees and landscaping, some screening, some separation between the units and the front yard, so it really maintains that rural character.
Are there any questions for Pamela?
You're welcome.
So again, we'd just like to take the opportunity to see if anyone has further feedback for our project team before we come back, hopefully, in a couple of months with the preliminary plan application. If not, you know, we thank you for your time.
I think we appreciate that you're trying to keep the rural concept, and, you know, that's duly noted. The request for waivers, however, have the buildings very close to each other, and that's a bit inconsistent with that overall goal, so that's something we want to be looking at. So if something can be done in terms of other options whereby that particular waiver's not needed, I think it makes your application a little bit better. Just my independent thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree. You've mentioned the amount of square footage per unit, but the project looks tight, so it's the usable acreage and not the overall acreage, as you know, and then the number of units based on that. So it does look like it's tight, so you may want to have your landscape architect to chime in on the separation, because I think planting some trees between the units will give the feel that I think she's looking for.
Separation and privacy between units.
Correct.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your time.
Just in case there's any member of the public that would like to comment, please come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Matthew Fink. I live at 247 Old County Road. Somewhat of a softer plan, better approach, but we still have, this is what we planned to do, but we could do this. I think here they're kind of handcuffed because of the amount of the wetlands. I travel Route 7 somewhat routinely. Can we go up to the first engineering?
Do you want to?
The one after the conceptual. You can pull that one up right there.
This one?
So Mr. Sloboda brings up the issue with the septic. This one, I don't know why they want to tie it into the septic system on Route 7, but the lower right-hand side right behind Mr. Deambra, that it weaves the wetlands on that piece of property. If I'm correct, the slope of that goes across Route 7, and there's more wetlands on that side. And if you travel that in the winter, I know they've been doing improvements on Route 7. Route 7 accesses a dam there and it freezes, causes a heavy slushing condition there, so I think that needs to be addressed. They're in the process of repaving and doing Route 7 over in the meantime, and they're doing different sections, and it's my understanding they're going to go all the way up to 116. So in the meantime, that road's all going to be redone, and then in the meantime, it's going to get cut up again, patched. The physical alteration permit says you're supposed to go back and maintain that, so that's going to become something that's going to settle on the road and cause another problem. The houses close together. I work in public safety. When you put houses on top of each other, neighbors don't get along. You can have 10 acres apiece. If they're arguing over a small space, you might as well live on a postage stamp. Ms. Lynn and Mr. D'Amone bring up the quality of the land. It's nice to see something that has a recreation facility for a change. You're putting all these people in there, but where are they supposed to go? I don't think there's sidewalks on Route 7. The closest playground might be La Perche School. I don't think they're going to walk down Route 7. I don't think they're going to cross Route 7 and go down Whipple Road to the ball field either. So again, we talk about these comprehensive plans, we're putting working-class homes of low to moderate income, and what do these people have to go to? I don't see any banks in the area, medical facilities. I don't think these children, if they did live there, would be required to walk to school. I kind of like the plan because it's a smaller plan, it's a little bit softer, but again, is there going to be sidewalks in the facility? And the only other concern is lighting. You have Highland Drive, I think Highview Drive, and there's a Forest Drive up on the top north side of that plan, so if you can't come down further to the south, and then maybe the wetlands and DEM says, hey, you're encroaching on this, you need to move your project backed up, so now those houses will be abutting, the established property owners up there. So now they're going to have to cut some more of those trees back to put the property in. The closeness of the houses, fire is a condition. If something goes up, it's going to be tough for the fire department to keep that from aggressing to the next house because you can have houses that are 15, 20 feet apart, and ash flies and heat travels and a fire, and having houses that close together is going to be an issue. And again, I don't know if there's going to be soundproofing in these houses, but if you're going to stack those houses, I don't know, even if you put a row of trees between them, like I think Mr. Calvecchio said, the aesthetics is there, but it's still on top of each other. So I would give this one maybe a B-, not a C+. But thank you.
Anyone else would like to be heard? Hello, if you could state your name and address, please.
Jen Schaefer. I live on 11 Maureen Drive, so right on the other side of that. One thing that is very concerning to me is just water levels in general. So in our neighborhood alone, there's been multiple homes that have had flooding in their basements, on their yards, all over the place, so I worry that more development really close to us would cause that to happen more and more and cause us to pay more and more to get more things in place to make that stop happening in our homes. The other thing that worries me is having even more children coming to our very, very full elementary schools. Where would they go? Would they have to be bused to one of the other elementary schools? schools? And there's also, I don't see it on there, there's a historic cemetery right at the north part. Is that the square? Okay, it wasn't discussed. So, there's that as well. That should be taken care of nicely and not gone near at all. So, those are some of my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd, you raised your hand earlier.
Charles Boyd, 14 Sprague Street.
We don't need to swear you in.
I also like the board. Thank you for coming up. Let me speak. I know this property very well. Mr. Saboda lives around in that. He also knows the property very well. It's extremely wetting over there. Everything is wet, so no matter what you do over there, it's going to flood. Everybody else's property. It's going to die. It's going to die over there. So, that's me there. I hear, when I was on this board, all the time from attorneys, not no offense, that they're doing us residents a favor, or this board a favor. We could, we could do 50 more, 100 more. Aggravate me, don't give me this. I feel like I'm in a mafia, you know, boot camp. You know what I'm saying? I'm trying to be funny, but it's like, you know, it's like intimidation all the time, something like that. And this LMI, I've asked the town manager, I don't know, it was something like that. Why don't we have a committee? Keep saying, this, I looked into this very, I'm very upset about this now. This started in 2005. Since 2005, we've lost percentage. We've lost. It's gone down. All these projects coming along, Lime Rock, this one, Archie, this one over here, that one, there's so many going. The first part of this thing called planning. Now, it's nice that we get into what kind of trees they're going to go, or where we're going to go, like that. Are we planning for traffic? Planning for how much it's going to cost for garbage to be removed from all these places? What is the idea of all the taxes, the LMIs? I can't get a straight question on an LMI. What's paid for? $400,000? Are the taxes stay $400,000 for the rest of 100 years on that? Can the town tax them on the value of that 100 years later when everybody else's property is going up to $600,000, they stay at $400,000? I mean, there's so much involved in this LMI that this town should have an LMI committee. We have a dog park committee.
Can I, can I redirect you? You're, you're making very valid comments, but this is public comment on this particular.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I, I know, but.
Take these things involved, and so even look at these. Should we be even looking at them at this point? Are they beneficial? Is 25% enough? Should it be 30%? Should it be 40%? What, where are we going with this? We're not going anywhere. We just keep getting more of them, more of them, more of them, and more of them, and more of them. We're not getting anywhere. All we're doing is getting abused. This town is getting abused. The character of this town, the traffic, everything in this town is getting, and it's all because of this LMI and bonus, density bonus and stuff like that. And if you look up all through life, people living next to one another, calling projects, calling this, calling that, don't get along. The police departments are always in there. Parties, parking, parking in the streets, like this LMI thing. They don't even have enough parking for, for Lime Rock. Park, I mean, it's statistically wise, there's all kinds of problems with these developments, kind of across the developments and stuff like that. They're not beneficial to the town. That's so, my point about the first thing we hear, how it benefits the town. How is it benefiting the town? That's the first thing this court, this planning board should be looking at, the benefit of the town. The engineer should look into the size of the toilets and where the drainage is, and how big, like Mr. Saboda said, something like that. You know, how, he's smart enough to know that the leach fields and these things are not going to, not going to, you know, work. There's so many answers. They don't even know if they can, who's going to pay the housing? Who's going to pay what cost? There's too many answers to just let this figure it out for itself. Let's find out what this LMI and these projects are going to do in this town, and how we can get this 10% off our necks because we're not getting it. It's just one after another. Now, there's, how many projects are we, are we looking at over here? This going to be just the trash from all these places? How much is the trash budget going to have to be in these places? You know, we don't plant the trees, don't snow anymore anyways. You know what I'm saying? I seriously really think that we're getting overlooking the LMI idea of these projects and stuff like that. We should stop, tell everybody, we've got the brakes on, we're going to figure out what we're doing here. Leave us alone until we figure out what we're doing. Just quit being forced to do something because we're, because we're going to get sued. Go to court. Take them to court.
This, this is just a pre-application.
I know, but I'm just saying, do you point, stop it. I would deny it.
Let me finish. It's a pre-application where they're just coming in to get our overall input.
Input would be just to manure them.
I understand.
That's what I'm saying. Stop it right now. Just say, no more further. We're going to take a break on this.
Anything else?
That's it. I was saying.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Mr. Monti?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, next matter, Endurance Clean Energy ID 2507, major land development master plan.
Somebody's last year left the voting.
Charles.
Chuck.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joe Carnavaldi, and I represent the applicant here, Endurance Clean Energy. We are here on our master plan application seeking several things, which we will discuss in more depth as we go along here. First is a major subdivision, which would include the creation of two new parcels. The second is the approval for the major development in the form of a large-scale solar application. And the third, I suppose, bucket of relief being requested are the associated elements of zoning relief. We're going to be looking for approval on a use variance as well as the associated dimensional variances. This will eventually house a 3.66 megawatt solar development. We are anticipating that this project in total will span seven parcels as they are currently set out according to the tax assessor. Those are Assessor's Platte 50 lots 9, 9A, 9B, 10, 12, 29, and 67. John, if you can give me figure nine, please. Is that the best presentation? Okay. Oh, there we go. So, we've put on the screen the overall site map with the parcels identified, and you'll see to the north, there is this, the existing solar array. That parcel 50-29 is owned by Fishing Bear Properties LLC. Present-day parcel 50-29 includes the red and green portion that is on the map on the screen. I will explain the green portion of the map momentarily. As far as these parcels presently sit, we have some mixed uses. There are residences in the general vicinity. There is the existing solar facility that you see on the map immediately to the north of one of our proposed new parcels, and there is vacant land. The vacant land where you see on the map the, the solar outlay, that parcel or that bucket of parcels, because that's lots 9A and 9B and portions of Lot 9, that has historically been used for tire dumping if we go way back to the 80s and 90s. It's been used for gravel processing. There are existing still large piles of processed rock sitting on the property. This is immediately adjacent to the Davis Liquid Superfund Site, which the cursor is going over right now, immediately to the south of the Superfund Site, where we're proposing some potential battery storage. Those, that, that's an existing concrete pad that the EPA used to burn off materials when they were going through the remediation process of the Superfund Site years ago. John, can you bring up some of the photos of the existing? So, what we have on the screen here is just to, to give you all, you know, some orientation as to how the property looks present day. This is a portion of the access road that comes in from Log Road to the proposed development area. This is some of the terrain in the next few photos that I think will be the same. Here we are looking from the proposed development site to the existing solar array immediately to the north. And this is looking south from the existing array. And as you can see, you know, this, and you'll hear us talk about this further, it's our position that this is, you know, an ideal site for solar because it's already mostly flat. There's going to be minimal tree clearing and brush clearing involved. In fact, as you probably saw in our materials, we already do have RITM approval for the core forest, which would allow the clearing of 100,000 acres of trees, but 100,000 square feet. Thank you for that. That's, that's a lot of acreage. I apologize. 100,000 square feet. But as you will also hear with respect to our tree and landscape plan, there is not a lot, if any, more than minimal tree clearing that will be necessary. Most of it is going to consist of thinning just to address any shade areas on the portion of this parcel to the south. And here we are looking at some of the existing piles of gravel and processed stone that exists on the property today. And this is some of the vegetation, which, again, depending on the, the final layout of the panels and what the board may or may not approve, that will potentially impact any of the minor tree clearing and brush clearing that would occur in I think we're good there, John. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is, this is the concrete pad that exists today. That was the former EPA burn site. And again, with respect to the battery storage system that we are contemplating would eventually have to be installed here, we're not going to be adding or disrupting the pad site. We would essentially be sitting the battery containers on top of the existing pad. Now, just to give you some brief comments with respect to the plans that were submitted, the wetland, or the, the wetland plan, which Ms. Elwell, Megan Elwell with GVA Environmental, is here with me tonight, and she will speak to some of those issues where you see the FEMA Zone A marked on the plan. To that, just to give you an overarching comment, when the existing solar to the north was going through the permitting process, that area was also generally mapped as the FEMA Zone A. That was changed. And we expect here that the Zone A mapping is also not correct as you see it on the screen on Figure 3. That goes through the middle of our proposed site. And to that effect, we are coordinating a floodplain review of that specific area. There is also a groundwater overlay protection district that the Town Council passed and approved, I believe on April 1st of this year, which prevents the installation of any wells or the use of any groundwater for most of this development site. And that groundwater overlay district extends over the entirety of parcel 50-29. And it does not include parcels 9, 9A, and 9B. As far as the environmental and technical review as submitted, the soils and the slope maps were reviewed and compiled from the USDA and from the USGS. As I mentioned, when we were looking through the photos, as far as vegetation goes, there is not an anticipation of significant tree clearing or brush clearing. In fact, it will mostly be minimal. Preliminary designs also include the preliminary basins and stormwater plan, which include drainage swales as well to control any runoff which may accumulate in the area. And overall, this site, as it's presently selected and proposed, avoids sensitive and protected wildlife areas. As I mentioned earlier, John, if you can give me Figure 6, we are proposing a 3.66 megawatt solar facility. The land area of the actual solar components, plus the inter-row spacing, as well as the battery site, battery site in the equipment pads, that consists of approximately 14.91 acres. And the parcel, as we are proposing it overall, is going to be an aggregate of 35 acres. The solar system will include the PV panel arrays, a battery energy storage system, transmission lines, and equipment pads. There will be some lighting that is limited to safety lighting, which would be downward facing and dark sky compliant. Access to this parcel, because it is going to be a landlocked parcel, is going to be via easement over Lot 9, which is immediately to the west, to the east, I'm sorry, utilizing the existing gravel road that we have on the map, and I showed some pictures of earlier. There are no houses that will be constructed here, obviously. And because this is a solar site, there will be, you know, virtually no impact on traffic or other town utilities. With respect to the parcel reconfiguration, John, if you can go back to Figure 4. As I mentioned earlier, we're proposing the creation of two new parcels. Parcel B is highlighted in green, and that is the western portion of the existing Platte 50 Lot 29, the area that's west of the Pond Waris. And we are proposing the creation of Parcel C, which is in orange to the south to house this proposed solar development. Parcel C consists of portions of Platte 50 lots 9, 9A, 9B, 10, and 12. All of these parcels are presently located and zoned R200. So, with respect to the zoning relief, we are requesting, I'm going to go through them generally. I'll give the rundown, and then if there are any questions as I go, just please feel free to interrupt me. So, because this is R200, as the way the zoning ordinance presently requires, there's no solar allowed. So, we are asking first and foremost for a use variance to allow the non-conforming solar. Accordingly, we're also seeking a dimensional variance to allow lot coverage on this proposed parcel C to exceed the, the regular 20%, and we're going to be putting forth a 41.8% lot coverage figure. We are looking and asking for a dimensional variance on frontages and lot width. The zoning ordinance requires 300 feet of frontage. Our frontage here will essentially be through the easement, and it's going to be the width of the access road plus, you know, maybe a couple of more feet each way. The access road, I believe, is 15 feet, and Mr. Lucini will confirm and correct me on that. So, we will have potentially a little space beyond that, but we're essentially asking 15 feet to be allowed. As far as setbacks go, because this would be solar in a residential zone, the setbacks are actually increased from what is standard for an R200, and that, that's 300 feet from front, side, and rear. And actually, on the, on the screen right now, we have Figure 10. This shows the buildable area of this proposed lot, which is the unhatched section right in the middle if we were not to get any relief on the dimensional requirements. So, with respect to the, to the setbacks, we're going to be asking the board to approve 15-foot setbacks on the northwest and eastern sides. setbacks on the northwest and eastern sides of this proposed new parcel. With respect to buffer requirements, the zoning ordinance on a solar development requires either a 50-foot wooded buffer, 20-foot partial landscape screen, or a 10-foot full landscape screen, or stockade fencing. As you'll hear momentarily, where this, this site is not visible from any public roads, nor is it visible from any houses in the general vicinity. And we would be contemplating to utilize chain link fencing around the site, consistent with what is utilized on the solar array site immediately to the north. With respect to Parcel 50, Flat 50 Lot 29, provided that the proposed subdivision is approved, we would be carving out 55 acres to the west of the quarry pond area, leaving 85 acres remaining on Flat 50 Lot 29. So that would increase the lot coverage of 50-29 to 28.54%. Now, this is obviously a parcel in a development to the north that was permitted and approved some five years ago. And the reason we are asking now for this relief is the fact that the groundwater overlay protection district has created a hardship for that parcel. I'm not sure if anybody has seen the map of the overlay protection district, but it's our position essentially that the western part of the parcel was included simply because it's part of Flat 50 Lot 29 at large. Because immediately to the south, 50-29, Lots 9A and 9B, the overlay protection district does not extend that far west. And in fact, it hits the westernmost point on 50-29, and, you know, that's obviously further away from the immediately adjacent parcels. We want to separate this parcel so that we can then apply to the EPA and essentially present to them evidence of why we didn't believe that, that new parcel at that point should be included in the overlay protection district. And to the extent that, you know, you haven't seen that overlay protection ordinance recently, the burden is ultimately on an applicant. You know, we have to first go to the EPA, get the EPA's sign off, and then we have to present to the council, and it's our burden of proving to the council that the overlay protection district ought not apply to that parcel. As I mentioned earlier, and obvious from the maps, this is immediately adjacent to the Davis-Liquid Superfund site. There is ongoing coordination being carried out with the EPA as it relates to their ongoing remedial work, which has, I believe, fairly recently included some injections into the It is our position that this plan supports the town and the state's renewable energy goals. This is likely to be the last solar development in this, in the town of Smithfield, if not the state of Rhode Island, as a result of some, as a result of some recent federal legislation. This plan reuses previously disturbed site with minimal ecological disruption. This avoids core forests and agricultural land disruption, and this promotes clean distributed energy in line with the town's comprehensive plan. So with that being said, I would like to first invite any questions on the general overview I provided, and if there are none, I will bring up Mr. Lucini of Endurance Clean Energy.
The lot coverage requirements, why, why going to 41.8 versus what's in the ordinance?
Well, what is-
And what hardship is there that grant that, warrant that variance?
Sure. So I, I will be eliciting some testimony on that point, but I can tell you, you know, from a general standpoint, we are happy to hear feedback from the board on, you know, any of those points that would not be reasonable or, you know, considerable. Because to the extent we need to engage with the landowner to potentially obtain more land, we can do that, but we would rather avoid it because, as I mentioned and as you saw in the photos, this site, as we have identified it, it's already clear mostly, it's already flat, it's an ideal site for the solar development because nothing else can reasonably go there, or even possibly go there, I should say. And as you look at the map, immediately to the south of what we've identified as the proposed boundary of that new parcel C, there are significant, you know, grading issues. So it's not anything that we would be able to utilize for more solar. That would simply be, you know, a potential land acquisition to minimize what the overall lot coverage is.
In the setback, you're, you're seeking a variance from 300 feet to what?
15 feet.
And why is that?
So if you, you know, looking at the map, there is essentially no buildable area if we had to be within 300 feet. It's, it's a very small portion, and part of, you know, the economics, so to speak, and I'm not relying solely on economics, but there is a massive, massive interconnection cost for this system once it's built and then connected into the grid. And that's something Mr. Lucini will speak on, but, you know, we need to be able to utilize some capacity so that it's not a project that can never get off the ground because of impossibility.
Part of the reason why that ordinance is in place is, I believe, to protect people who may live and/or build around the particular site. Do we know what the surrounding property is and what it can be zoned for in the future?
Sure. Let me introduce, this is Greg Lucini, the Principal of Endurance Clean Energy.
Okay. Do we swear, do we swear him in?
Yes.
Okay. If you could state your name, your address, then I'll swear you in.
Gregory Lucini. I live at 345 Thame Street in Bristol, Rhode Island, and my business is also based in Bristol, Rhode Island.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Lucini, L-U-C-I. Go ahead. So there are a series of questions that came up that, my lawyer is good at what he does, but he's not a technical guy at all. So I'll just take a minute to explain what's behind some of this. Starting with, it's, it's a perfect picture to look at right now. If you look at the existing array, see how the panels go in rows at a horizontal? And they basically run east to west, and the glass faces south. In this case, we go vertical. See how they no longer face the sun, they go east to west? And the reason we're doing that is because we are using single-axis trackers. So these panels in the new project follow the sun. Comes up there facing east, and it's setting it's going west, and then when it snows out, they go vertical so the snow doesn't stand, doesn't stick to it. So it's, it's really a great system. And then the times we use this is when we get squeezed for space or when we don't have enough production. So in this case, we planned on a 5 AC system, but when we got our, our study back from Rhode Island Energy, the most they would allow us to connect is what is applied for here, it's roughly 3.5 megawatts. So it went from, from 5 AC to 3.5 approximately megawatts AC. So that combined with the very heavy million-dollar-plus interconnection cost caused us to, to have to rethink the alignment. And what we did was we deployed the, the tracker design, which allows us to increase the production because we're following the sun all day. And the, the issue with that, though, is that to, in order to lay that out efficiently, we need vertical rows that go straight up and down. As opposed to what's called tables, we can stick them in corners, and you can find all kinds of spots on the site inside the different, there's a property line to meander through. These can't. These have to go straight up and down. So in order to do that and to maximize the strings, because you have to have certain sizes of them, we need to have as much space in our building window, a building envelope, so that we can utilize that and make those tracks as long as we can. So it's not as forgiving as if we're just putting out tables of rack of panels, but it ultimately provides more production. So that's the balancing act there. Now, I understand 15 feet sounds like very small. I get that, okay? From a practical standpoint, we won't be within 50, 15 feet on several places here because of the wetland. That would put us inside of the wetland buffers. In this project, we're not asking for any relief, we're not building inside of any wetland buffers, which is very unusual for solar projects in Rhode Island. We're cutting down minimal trees, we've already got core forest approval, and we're not asking for any wetland buffer relief. What makes this unique is the entire property, to your point, is owned by either me or the current landowner. So I own all the land to the north, and I own most of the land to the west. Okay, personally. That fact that that's a 15-foot buffer, I'm happy with that. I'm not in-
Right now you are, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future with that land.
Right, but I've got the land to the west, I, I do in the sense that the land to the west, I've got a quarry between that land and, and the solar array. So I know nothing's going there within that 15 feet or 50 feet or whatever. And then to the north, it's locked in. Nothing's going to happen to the north. There's already a solar array there. And then there's, there's open space, which is, you've got to be a billy goat to walk on it, so nothing's happening there. So I do know about that area. Now, again, what makes this unique is if you look to the east, to the right, that's a Superfund site. That thing's not going away in, in our lifetimes. Okay, that's, that's a simple fact. The current mediation that they're doing, they're saying 10 years, they'll take another look and see where they are. It's, it's a long-term thing going out there. Nothing's going into the east at all. And then to the south, that's a hill. That's a very large hill right there. It's going to be very difficult for anybody to do anything on it. So the combination of those things and the fact that there's not a landowner that's going to come in today and object because we agree. And then for the future, I just explained why development within, around this, this thing is, it's not really practical or possible. So that's why I understand 15 feet is tight. I'm not going to require 15 feet on the east and west, where I've got some wetlands I'm contending with. But at the top, where you see I've got, where I'm coming up to the, to the old array, the original array, I want to push those, those rows of trackers as far to the north as I possibly can. That's the best production on the whole site because it's completely clear to the south, and that, that's the best production. So I want to push those all the way up. And then to the south, I want to go, I, I could be totally flexible on that buffer to the south. And, and if you wanted to have a conversation about where could I change that, I could do that. I could change the buffer to the south. It doesn't have to be 15 feet, given the slot line. To the, to the, to the east, I'd like to keep it where it is. And to the west, I know I've got a, I've got a 50-foot wetland buffer there, so that's going to keep me off also. So if we were to have a conversation about changes, if you wanted to, if you would like to discuss that, I'm very willing to do it. We tried to keep this simple. But if I can have 15 feet to the north, and let's say-
You're talking about 15 feet in the area where there, it's a budding, an existing solar system?
Exactly. Okay. I, I can, I would like to have it there, but in the other areas, I could reduce it to, say, 50 feet? I, I may increase it, increase it to 50 feet, which sounds a lot better than 15. I know it does.
Mr. Lucini, while I have you up here, can you tell the board what you have been engaged in with the state regulatory bodies related to the battery energy storage?
Sure. So we, a little over a year ago, Rhode Island State Legislature placed a requirement that they want, they want future solar projects to include battery storage. And they gave, they assigned this to a subcommittee that was going to then manage the process to define it. Well, that's been going on a long time. We're a stakeholder, we attend the meetings every two weeks, and there, there's still several weeks away from coming up with any meaningful legislation. Let me put it back. Administrative regulations that, that are in line with the, the legislation that's already been done. So we know what's happening, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. So from a practical standpoint, and in good faith to meet whatever the new legislation administrative requirements are, we've identified a spot for a battery on the site. And, you know, if you take a step back and think about it, how, how, what a great story this is, that, that concrete pad, it's, you know, it's bigger than this building, much bigger, and that's where they actually burned off the bad stuff that was in the dirt they dug out of that Superfund site. So it's feet thick, it's not going anywhere, and it's just sitting there. So we thought, what a great spot to put a battery. The battery isn't contained, the battery, it's, you're talking containers, it's self-contained, and it's a perfect reuse of that space. And that's, that's why we, we thought that would be a good spot to put it. There's no houses anywhere near it. We could give you the distances if you like, we can measure those and tell you where the nearest house is. They're a long way away, and it will be self-contained, and it will have fire prevention so that if something was to happen, it'll have the ability to extinguish itself. And then if the fire department wanted to get in there, there's plenty of water immediately on sight with those quarries that never, never go dry. They can, they can pump forever.
Okay. Any questions to the board of the app? Again, to the right and to the left.
Okay.
Does the road need improvement for the fire department to have access?
I don't believe so. The road is, the road was actually built by the EPA. So picture what they had going on out there and burning all that and all that effluence. Built by them many years ago. It's the exact same road, it's been maintained. I'm glad to take, take everyone for a walk on the site, walk the road and see it.
How long is that, the entrance onto the road to the battery area?
Uh, John, is it maybe 1,000-plus feet? More than 1,000 feet, probably. You can see it right there.
Yeah. I can see and watch this here. This looks very long, but long as it's, fire department has no issue at all.
Right. This is areas to turn around out there, significant areas. And I guess the good news is, it's long, but that's a good thing because it's away from everything else.
Yep. Thank you.
Michael?
So I'm not familiar with the state legislature stands on battery storage. I've read everything you provided to me, but I think our town passed some kind of ordinance recently. I think you mentioned it here somewhere, maybe a sort of somewhere else. But how do I get around that?
Sure. Well, what you have currently, and what I believe what you've actually rejected in town is an AC-to-AC coupled battery system. Basically, it's where somebody puts a really big battery very close to transmission lines, and they take AC in, and then they load shift and they sell it when the power's more valuable to push the AC out. This is different. And in fact, it's, the state doesn't like those either. I believe those have been, in the current meetings, anyway, I believe in the current stakeholder groups, the state's saying they don't want those, they want these, which is DC coupled. What DC coupled means is the batteries are charged by the solar array.
Okay.
Right? So I'm charging the battery with the solar array, and then when it's cloudy, it's snow, when it's nighttime, whatever, when, when Rhode Island Energy needs it, we, we, we release the energy. We inject the energy into the grid. And the reason why that's so important, and the reason why the state's moved forward on it, and even with all the attempts by the federal government to kill the solar industry, they're keeping the incentives on the batteries. And the reason is the batteries are the key to grid resilience. So if something happens, who knows where, wherever our power is coming from, Smithfield, Rhode Island has a store of battery energy right there that can still be discharged to keep, to keep, keep houses running for-
I, I understand that rationale, but, so this is a DC battery?
Yes.
So, and please excuse me, because I am somewhat ignorant on this subject. Hasn't all the, a lot of the fires and explosions we've read with, is this a lithium-ion battery?
Right.
So hasn't all the explosions and fires associated with those types of batteries, haven't they been DC units?
Right. So typically, they are DC units. The AC is what you inject back into the grid. Just like in your house, you have AC power. These operate with DC. There have been issues with fires in the past, and the rules have gotten extremely stringent on how they are- on how they are protected and how the, and the fire suppression that's required for them now. It didn't exist when these things were built many years ago. So there's been significant improvements in it, and like, I wouldn't be talking to you about putting this thing across the street from this building, okay? I wouldn't be having that conversation. But this thing's in the middle of nowhere here, and it will have those protections in it.
Thank you.
But I believe, I believe it was explained to this board that there's, I mean, it's like a Tesla catching on fire. It has to burn itself out. There's no way to put the unit out other than letting it burn out. And the board was concerned about, you know, potential wildfire spread because this thing is just burning in the fire department, and nobody can do anything about it. I think that's what, part of the rationale of not allowing them in the town. So given that it's remote, okay, but there's still a chance of wildfire or fire happening in this location because of this right now, this element. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that you've addressed the concern.
Right. I respect that. I don't disagree with you because we didn't intend to address it tonight. And the reason is, we're waiting for the state of Rhode Island to issue the guidelines so we can do a final battery design. Our plan is, or assumption is, we'll be using lithium-ion phosphate, lithium-ion phosphate batteries that do not self-propagate. In other words, when one starts, it doesn't keep them all going, okay? Keep them all going. It doesn't, it doesn't go in a chain. And inside of the containers are, will be fire suppression. But rather than come here and give you a cartoon and say, well, this is what it might look like, my intention was to say to you, here's what we're thinking. Here's what we're thinking about putting it. I realize we still owe you design standards and why in answering these questions. So what I would ask for tonight, as we come through this, or Joe will, I'd like to move the solar project, as a solar project, forward, answer all your questions, and then, and then in terms of your decision with the next step, it can clearly define that we need to come back and talk to you about that battery. All right? And then by then, I'll have everything I need, and I'll be ready to do that. They'll tell you that in Massachusetts, which is, you know, at least as tough as Rhode Island is to permit and to obtain, you know, the approvals for these things, they're being approved for all new solar projects. It's a requirement in Massachusetts.
Catherine, did you have a question?
It's what, a thousand feet or more in for a fire truck to get in?
Yes.
And so in the middle of the winter, and we have three feet of snow, how's the fire truck going to get in there?
Okay, so first of all, there's two entrances. The entrance off of Tarklin Road's not as long, so a fire truck can come from Tarklin or from Log Road, or both. And the EPA, the roads are maintained. The EPA requires that the road coming in be open, and we will acquire it as the solar project, and we will maintain that road to snow.
So you're going to plow it where everything else snows?
We have to plow it. We have to have access to the solar array.
Mr. Lucini, can you please also talk about the federal legislation that you referenced and the time constraints, so to speak, as it relates to the permitting process?
Sure. So, and this is one of the reasons why I'm suggesting we bifurcate the process, because what I didn't want to do is come in and present to you a solar array, and then two months later come back and say, oh, by the way, here's my battery. I wanted to show you the whole thing, okay? And give you the overall concept and get your feedback for it. So my challenge as a developer right now is I've got a federal, new federal legislation that ends the investment tax credits very quickly. And it surprised everybody how aggressive they were with it. So we have a cliff date, and that cliff date is a year, less than a year from now, to start construction. So our goal is, if everything works out, we'll be starting construction on both the battery and the solar array. At a minimum, I want to be in, I need to be in a position to start construction on the solar array, and I've got a lot of work to do to get there. So what I'm looking for is your help to help me move the solar project along so that I can at least safe harbor the solar project. And what Joe said about this being probably the last solar project in Smithfield, if you don't already have one in front of you that's already moved along, already has their interconnection application approved like I do, there won't be another one built. And that is probably true for the whole state of Rhode Island as well. This is a great site. This planning board asked me repeatedly to put the first solar array down on this exact land, but Mr. Davis wouldn't allow for it. He's no longer with us. His son now wants to move this along and repurpose it. So that's, that's who we are. But I need help to move this along and to get it permitted so we can build it and bring to Smithfield all the better elements of this project.
Mr. Chair?
Lucini.
So let me understand something. As far as the battery portion of this particular petition is concerned, you're not moving that forward, or you're not requesting that that be moved forward this evening? Am I correct?
Correct. Well, is there a way we can move it with the idea that we've got to still come back and talk about it?
I think so. I think the specific fire plan and all of those associated elements would be more appropriate for final, perhaps not have final battery component being in administrative.
Yeah, I think, I think we would want experts to testify, have maybe the towns' experts. So I think that's more of a drawn-out process, to be honest with you.
And we're going to, we're pushing the state as hard as we can as, because we're stakeholders. We're on the study groups to move them along, and I'm hoping in the next few weeks, we'll have the guidance that we need so we can actually formally design the system, talk to Rhode Island Energy about it, go through their process to make sure that they're going to accept it, and then have the information I need for you with that design in hand.
Mr. Chair, the facility that's already there, is that associated with your facility at all?
So the facility that's already there, I developed it. I was a developer, and I sold it to Carisage Energy, who's the current owner-operator. I'm also the landowner. I own Fishing Bear Properties. So I own the land to the north, and I'm the landlord for the solar array.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you answered this or not, but how is the existing array? Is it working as was hoped? Better, worse?
At least nominal, because it really varies. These things are planned out over twenty-five-year times. You can have better years than others, but from what I understand, it's been working well. Easy winters help.
Mr. Lucini, just wanted to ask you, based upon your experience with the development to the north, and actually, before I do that, let me ask you this. Have you constructed or developed any other solar developments?
Yes. In Rhode Island, I've got projects in Cranston, Coventry, we're working on, and Breville, not far from here at all, and we're working on in Tivon right now also, and we've got one in Richmond. Those sites, previously disturbed landfills, superfund sites, that's what I focus on. So we're on a superfund site in Cranston. We're on a gravel pit, a dambro gravel pit in Richmond. Tivon's a, is a dump, and Tivon is the town landfill. That's what attracted me to this area to begin with. Most people run from superfund sites. I believe in it. I think it's the right thing to do.
Mr. Lucini, based upon your experience on other developments, as well as the development that you have here and the development that we're proposing, as it relates to the zoning and the dimensional variances we are requesting, is that a move necessary to allow the reasonable use of this identified site for the solar development?
Yes. It is because, you know the Davis family. I've got a box to work in. If this project's going to go forward, I've got to stay in the box. If I want to have additional land, I don't know that I can pull that off. That's the problem.
Based upon the graphic we had earlier, which is Figure 10, can the project reasonably function or be built without this requested zoning?
No. If that's all I could build, that footprint that you see in the gray color, I'd go home because I've got a million-dollar-plus interconnection, and that's nowhere near enough production to support that interconnection. So when we're talking interconnection, the question hasn't been asked, but I want to bring it up. You know, the original project required that Log Road be upgraded, and, you know, I drove down and down it many times, and it took time to do it, to put in all-new poles, all-new three-phase. We don't have to do any of that on this project. It's done. So there'll be no work required out there on Log Road to allow this project to be built.
I have nothing else for you. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Lucini before I bring up Ms. Elwell?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the superfund site and what's happening there? Good. Thank you.
Did you want to say something? We haven't...
Yeah, I have a question about the battery floor, or are you going on with something else right now? I can leave.
Let's have them present there.
Let's have them present there.
We can have Ms. Tapi speak.
Megan, can you just please state your full name for record?
Yep. Megan Elwell, M-E-G-A-N-E-L-W-E-L-L.
State your address, please.
Seventy-three John Dyer Road, Little Compton.
Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Elwell, can you please tell the board what your occupation is?
Yes. I'm an environmental scientist and project, assistant project manager with GZA Environmental and based in the Providence office.
And your firm was retained as the project engineer for this development, correct?
Correct.
Can you describe your educational background and professional license, please?
Yep. My master's degree in environmental science management, so it was on remediation. Sorry. Master's degree in environmental science management. I do a lot of work in remediation, site development, in terms of environmental planning. I get to sort of do the fun computer geek stuff, supplemented by field visits.
And how long have you been working in this field?
Roughly six years in this field, three of which with GZA.
And can you explain how you became familiar with this property and the subject development?
Yes. I got to participate in a few field visits associated with the wetland delineation, as well as topographic surveys that were conducted on-site. I was sort of allowed to investigate the environmental piece, as well as the desktop study that we completed. And that included file reviews and publicly and privately available GIS, which is the mapping software data.
Ms. Elwell, I'm going to ask you if you can walk us through the plans that were submitted. Just give us an overview, and we can start with Figure 2.
Yeah, so a lot of this has been said previously, but I'll sort of go over the development of these maps and these figures and sort of what went into them. So starting with Figure 2, here you're looking primarily at the slopes and the significant structures that are existing. So what you're seeing in sort of, there's sort of a square of those contour lines, that is identifying areas where the slope is greater than fifteen percent, which was the benchmark we used to sort of start deciding what the developable area was. As you can see, that's sort of a primary constraint for the site, being with the surrounding area being very steep. And those sort of outliers in the middle, those are existing stockpiles. So this was LiDAR data from 2022, and that's picking up on gravel and other material pits that are not permanent.
Consistent with the images we put on the screen earlier?
Yes.
Can you take us to Figure 3, John? What do we have laid out here?
Shown here are, in dark blue, are the wetland areas. The areas closest to the site, and these are marked, were delineated by a professional biologist, wetland biologist for the state of Rhode Island. And then further out from the site, we use Rhode Island DEM, publicly available data. As the wetland regulations now, the buffer zones are determined sort of by the overall area of the wetland. So we use that to expand out to show the greater area. But there are wetland flags that were mapped closer to the proposed area. So those are the dark blue, and then the sort of hatched areas around each of the dark blue are the buffer zones that would be required by DEM, that we couldn't build within without special permission. As has been said earlier, we've remained outside of all of those buffer zones. We don't foresee any wetland impacts from this project. And then the lighter teal-blue color is the FEMA flood zone, which, as was mentioned, we are in discussions with DEM to get that modified, as it doesn't reflect the characteristics of the site and our sort of knowledge of it. And as the northern property has also been adjusted, it's sort of been previously established that it's unlikely to be a flood zone.
Thank you. Can you move to Figure 4, please?
This is illustrating the, primarily the soil components of this area. I gave the larger area for context, but sort of looking in at the primary proposed project site. It's mostly gravelly, sandy soils with dump material, and in the context of the United States Geological Service, that just means human-transported materials, does not necessarily mean sort of waste product, which is also consistent with the photos you saw previously.
Okay. Figure, we'll go to Figure 6, just so we have that inset view, which for the board's edification, the Figure 6, we're just zoomed in on the selected area of Figure 5.
Correct.
And what do we show there?
This is the proposed conditions of the solar array, surrounded by the proposed fence line for that array, as well as sort of a zoomed-in window of the access road coming from Log Road into the array and then to the potential battery storage area.
And can you explain your methodology for deriving at what I've presented for the lot coverage percentage and how we calculate the lot coverage for the solar?
Yes. So that was the fun part for me, telling the, sort of figuring out the constraints based on the wetlands buffers, sort of tying together everything from the first four figures where the soil and slopes allow, where the wetland buffers allow, where the core forest designation allows to be built. And then from there, the goal is to encompass all of the proposed array and subsequent features within that new parcel boundary, while allowing sort of that buffer zone, you can sort of tell around, is vegetated to the south and the northeast. And the lot coverage includes the panels themselves, which are the darker shading, and the inter-row spacing between them.
And we also include the pad site that's to the north of that road area, correct?
Yes.
And that's utilities.
Yes. And I apologize that I can't read it, but it does call out the size of it.
And we're also including the battery storage site area, correct?
Correct. And that shading illustrates the entire, the concrete pad that's there as existing, not the proposed.
You're referring to the proposed usage of it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you move to Figure 7?
This one is illustrating the landscape plan as sort of between conceptual and affirmed design. These are areas in the dark green shading that is the minimal vegetation, and that was illustrated in the photos you saw previously, where there are some pockets of trees, some shrubs to be removed. These areas highlighted are from aerial imagery and preliminary site visits. This is likely to be the largest extent likely. It will, in reality, probably be much smaller pockets to be cleared of vegetation, as well as the lighter green shading to the south. That shows the full extent, I believe, of what was supported by DEM in our core forest discussions. That is not likely to be sort of the full area. That will be just thinned. There's no clear cutting proposed there.
All right, can we move on to Figure 8?
Similarly, this is a preliminary stormwater management plan. And again, similar to the vegetation plan, this shows the potential areas for the stormwater basins, not the likely sizing or quantity of stormwater management. As the panels, in their unique nature, was explained earlier, it's unlikely to need nearly this much stormwater management. The way that the panels move with the state of Rhode Island regulations reduces the amount of stormwater management required based from a normal or a more traditional system.
Can we move to Figure 10? And I know we discussed this with Mr. Lucini earlier, and I believe you mentioned it, but just even I misheard you. I believe you provide a testimony that would not be building in any of the right-end buffer, wetland buffers, correct?
Correct.
Can we move to 11, please? Can you explain to the board what this map shows or what this exhibit shows?
Yes, this is an overlay of the proposed, the easternmost portion of the proposed array. It's what you're seeing on the left of the screen with the access road moving up. Thank you. Overlaid on the EPA remediation plan. So I believe the yellow shaded, or sort of yellow circle in the center is the active treatment area. And that is where the EPA is doing their current remediation. And as you can see, our, the proposed array remains outside of that, as well as outside of the sort of red shaded larger area.
Now, as a whole, can you explain whether the land area that consists of our proposed parcel C can yield any beneficial use under the existing zoning ordinance in the R2?
I don't believe so. With the area around it and the regulations, I don't believe residential use could be beneficial.
What can you, can you talk generally about the EPA remediation, the potential need for test wells?
Yes, so currently, they have begun, I believe, this summer. They initiated more injection, and they're using a bio product where they inject this liquid into the wells, and it helps degrade the contamination faster. They're doing ongoing monitoring to see the efficiency of that. I know they have plans in five and 10 years to sort of reevaluate if the plan is working, if they need to add more wells, less wells. It is anticipated that they could need to install new wells in that area, as well as expand their monitoring wells if they want to see the impact that it's having in the wider area.
Is it your belief that this solar use is the only beneficial use of this land?
As far as I could tell, yes, absolutely.
Based upon your view of the history of this property and the associated contaminations and remediations, do you have a position on whether the hardship that exists for this property because of those issues were caused by the applicant endurance of the energy?
No, I believe they're historic prior to this application.
Now, are these conditions that you've described of a common in this general vicinity, or are they specific to this site next to the EPA superfund?
It's specific to this site.
Have you reviewed any of the older EPA remediation documents that tracked, you know, where the plume is located?
Yes.
And what is your belief as to where that plume is presently located? Would you be able to identify it on that map?
I believe it's within that yellow shaded, sort of where those purple smaller circles are located.
Now, will the approval and subsequent construction of this solar development substantially alter the general character of this surrounding area?
I don't believe, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes, will the construction, provided it's approved of this solar development, substantially alter the character of the area?
No.
And why is that?
It's already a disturbed site historically. With the existing surface, ground surface, it's not likely to be densely vegetated on its own. And it maintains sort of the use to the north and maintain, provides a use consistent with the EPA superfund site regulations.
Have you had any opportunity to look at the town of Smithfield's comprehensive plan?
I have.
And is your opinion of this project consistent with the comprehensive plan and the induced goals of the town?
Yes, I believe the economic development one specifically. Economic development portion of the comprehensive plan.
Ms. Elwell, in your professional opinion, do you believe that the requested variance in the use and the associated dimensional variances satisfy towns' elements? Strike that. Let me start that question over again. I haven't drank my coffee in a bit. In your professional opinion, do you believe that the requested variances and zoning relief elements satisfy all of the criteria under the Rhode Island general laws of Smithfield Town and Land's zoning code?
Yes.
I have no other questions for Ms. Elwell unless the board has, wants to ask anything?
You testified that the land has no other beneficial use other than this project. What went into your evaluation to rule out other potential beneficial uses, if any?
My experience is also in policy, so I review, I'm very familiar with a lot of the DEM regulations as well. And with Smithfield, in terms of the groundwater overlay that restricts some of the uses. With it being zoned residentially at the moment, I don't foresee a way that it could be feasibly used for residential purposes safely, especially with DEM and direct one of health requirements. In terms of other constraints, the wetland boundaries provided sort of some constraints in terms of what type of development would impact those wetlands, where solar, this solar development would not impact those wetlands, and other development outside of those buffers may still impact in terms of stormwater generation or otherwise.
So is it your testimony that this particular land has no other use other than for solar?
Based on the factors I've considered, I would agree that there's no actual beneficial use other than solar.
Questions?
The wetlands that's going through the property, you said you'd be appealing that designation to whom?
So GZA is in the process of discussing with DEM. And the wetland that goes through the middle, it's the FEMA flood zone. And it historically extended sort of further up. And with the last solar development, DEM coordinated with FEMA to get it modified. That was prior to my experience with it. But this one, we're in discussion with DEM to do a similar process. And that goes through, that's a bigger process, but it goes through whether or not the characteristics of the site and the slope and the wetlands present lend itself to being a flood zone. I won't bore everyone with how FEMA determined that years ago, but it's, there's a process outlined by FEMA to change the maps because they're not always accurate the way they've depicted them.
And what happens if they don't agree with your appeal? The project's a bust?
I don't know that it's a bust, but I think it would be reevaluated.
Mr. Lucini could speak on that again, but there would be obviously the need for some heavy modification within the constraints of the parcel.
We would potentially look at moving some panels, raising them out of the flood zone. We would also come out over insurance and getting it insured. So that's a factor as well. But one of the things that gives us confidence that the mapping's wrong is the fact that the state GIS mapping actually showed that exact area we're talking about as a wetland. So when the wetland scientists went out there, there was no wetland. So the GIS was already wrong, and perhaps the floodplain determination was related to the fact that they thought it was a wetland when it's not.
It's the agreement that would seem would take some time for whether it's FEMA or DEM to agree with your assumptions.
That's one of the challenges we have, absolutely. And we're, we're working it.
Other questions of the board members of the witness?
Public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further with your presentation before I open it up for public hearing?
Just a very brief closing, Mr. Chairman, if...
You want the opportunity after the public comment?
If I may, I would prefer that. Thank you.
It's now 8:22. If any members of the public like to be heard, please come forward, state your name, address, and I'll swear you in. Good evening.
Good evening. Rachel Tapi, Town Council.
Can I swear you in?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of questions for the attorney or whoever regarding the battery storage. And I will say that Mr. Member Mullen is correct in that Town Council did completely ban battery storage facilities in Smithfield in 2023, I believe.
Was it all batteries? Because the applicant made a distinction between AC and DC.
It's all. And the reason, we originally were going to ban them from all zones except for industrial zones, but then we learned of how dangerous they were, so we decided to just ban them in all zones. So I guess my questions, I have a few. I looked for that state legislation that's proposed that you brought up, and you brought this up, Attorney Carnaval, at a prior meeting. I couldn't find it at all. Do you have the number? If you don't have it now, that's fine. I just, I would like to see it. I searched for it and I could not locate it. And are they saying that they're going to require batteries or make it an option in the legislation?
So to my understanding, that's still subject to the ongoing peer review process. A final determination has not been made. I think they're probably a month or so, maybe a month or two months out from having final guidance and regulations on that. But that is still a moving target, and that is specifically why, you know, we don't have a specific building plan with all of the fire prevention and all of the engineering on the specific battery yet because we don't know what we're going to be designing for. All we can say, and what we do know now, is that the recommendations have come down from OBR and the PUC that any new solar developments should be battery storage site and have the capacity onsite to place battery storage somewhere on the presumption that there will be requirements.
Thank you. And did you say the size, square footage, or you cannot say yet due to the pending legislation?
So what is, well, what is...
Of the battery storage part?
The total battery storage, we do not know yet, but what we have is a 90 by 100-foot pad.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the existing pad space for it.
Okay, thank you. And I personally would like to know at a later date the distance from the nearest house as well. So, yeah, I don't want to say anything else. I don't want to influence you guys, but I think, you know. Thank you. That's just my question.
Mr. Chair, I also had a question regarding the letter that's in Item 8.
A question to who?
Of the Attorney Carnivali and Mr. Lucini. Item 8 is the ISO New England letter. It says it's a generator application. What exactly did ISO approve? Did they approve just the solar array, correct? Did you apply for this with a battery energy storage system represented?
No, we have not applied for the battery yet. They know that we are contemplating it, planning it, citing it, but we did not include it. So what we actually have in hand is what's called the I39, and that's a critical document because that is, confirms that ISO is not going to study our project. That's why, the main reason why, this will probably be the last project in Rhode Island because most, most projects are going to get caught up in that study. We're not. We were grandfathered because we had started this process early enough.
And there is no comment then about the battery energy? They're just saying basically, we don't need to know how much energy you're putting into our system? Is that what this letter represents?
Essentially, we grandfathered it in for the purpose of ISO analysis. And the difference is that Rhode Island Energy looks at it on a distribution standpoint, and they look at what's on the transmission line, I'm sorry, what's on the distribution line to get it from our point of interconnection to the substation, and then what happens inside of the substation. ISO looks at it and says, what happens with that substation and that renewable energy that's been injected? How that relates to all the electrically connected projects in substations all around it? And they typically, they call them cluster studies now because they study multiple substations at the same time. There's a major one coming for Rhode Island, and that's basically going to halt all solar development. And the combination of that with the cliff dates is going to stop and kill solar development in Rhode Island.
But what I was just asking was on the letter, the letter's basically saying, this is how much electricity, power we're allowing you to, we're not looking into how much you're putting into the system. It's sufficient, right? And there's no comment about battery? And ISO doesn't make any comments about requirements of battery energy, correct?
At this time, they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the public hearing? If any other members of the public would like to be heard, please come forward.
Matthew Fage again, 247 Old County Road.
I'm going to swear you, I'm going to swear you in again. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I continue to try to do my best. Correct. 247 Old County Road. Just again, reiterating the battery bank thing. I remember that when it was up on Mountain Dale Road, living on this end of town, a little concerned. I might be wrong, but I think there's two pads there. I think it went right to the pond to the left there. I only see one pad. So if this was the past, do we add a pad later on? So now we have a battery bank with, how much voltage would a battery bank hold versus kilowatts or megawatts? Because thermal runoff, we're talking voltage. I'm not going to get in your language. I might have a little bit of electrical background in a degree. But again, I think this is probably the great place for this, but I'm more concerned about the battery bank. Would this be a functioning solar field if the battery bank portion didn't happen? How does, how does electricity get out to the grid? Again, I know we're not supposed to direct it to them, but maybe that's a question you can ask. The way that the solar panels turn, I don't know how many motors are going to be there. Are they like a piezoelectric motor? Are they an induction motor? If you have 50 panels or 100 panels turning to chase the sun, which I think is great, how much noise is that going to generate? Again, you got a horse farm down to the right and left of Van Stables, Davis's house. Then you go beyond that, you start getting into some residential houses. But if you have 100 things turn at once, I was just... But if you have a hundred things turning at once, I was just up on Jericho Mountain, they have huge turbines up there. You don't really hear the turbine turning, but when they chase the wind sometimes, you get that big deep motor noise. Those are much larger. But when you got fifty units or ten, twenty-five, a hundred units turning at once, is there going to be a noise factor? As far as the battery bank, we have a very good fire department. We have the town manager, that's the fire chief, we still call him chief, the overseas thing, public safety director. There's piles of gravel left up there. I don't know if those are contaminated piles. Is that gravel to help redress the roads from the property? Or is that there in the event the battery bank goes in? I think the best way to put out a thermal fire is to bury it under dirt. Adding water to it, I don't think puts it out in a timely manner. The road going in, the fire department would definitely need to look at to make sure. I think if they were going to use apparatus up there, they would be pumping water, but they would also probably put the aerial ladder up, which is a lot of weight for the road up there, so want to make sure that at least that doesn't become muddy, icy in the winter if the trucks had to get up there. I don't know if they can straighten the road versus having it come in winding like that. And then the only other thing is, is there monitoring up there if a battery bank was to go in, if there was a fire? Does it trip a box at the fire department? Usually, any type of buildings that are occupied have their radio boxes that trigger, and they know that they have a box alarm to respond to. And again, if those battery banks were permitted, and again, I know, I think it was supposed to be industrial zones only. If that was to burn, I think the slope that comes down on the other side of that, if the fluids, the lithium batteries were to flow in a certain direction, I think it goes towards Tocqueville Road, and I think there's wetlands, more swamps over there. So just some things I think you as a panel would have to look at a little bit more. And I know you might not want to go up there and walk the property, but I think this is one that would benefit the panel if you went up and walked it and see the layout and the area that they're proposing this for. And it's intriguing to know if he didn't have the battery banks, is it still a viable project for him to get the electricity to the, the grid system? Thank you.
Let's make sure we close out the public hearing and then you can respond. Mr. Boyd. State your name and address and I'll swear you in.
14 Spex Street.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Hope so.
You do?
I do. I like the idea of the panels, but it's the battery thing, you know, the fire. How high, how high is the battery thing itself?
The chicken container.
Chicken container. Is it, is it possible to put out like a gas station suppression system over the top of it?
It's actually inside.
It's inside it. So it's put out, the fire by the battery is put out by oxygen being suppressed, not water?
It depends on the system this time.
So if you have the suppression system, in case it is an oxygen system, the water system, in cases of fire, the fire trucks can't get up, is it possible to build a pumping station? I know you have a great reservoir, I know, I know that property, the back, the army corps engineers moved that property. Pumping station up there, because that, the army corps engineers put that water, built that reservoir there. There is more than enough water in there. If there's a pumping station there, that way it triggers, if there's a fire, just triggers it, goes out. That way the fire department don't have to worry about.
Does, does water put that type of fire out?
Oh, that's insane. That's what I asked first question is, depending on what kind they have. Either should have a suppression system like they have at a gas station or a water system, like a hotel or anything else? So the fire department doesn't have to, we don't have to depend on the fire department getting up there. It won't get out of hand or something like that, you know what I mean? And like somebody said, some fires have to be put out, but just like, I think, just like sand, just choke it with the sand. So these are some of the things that, you know, that could be used, rather than just the fire department, you know, rescue, endangering their lives going up there, you know, putting out a toxic fire, you know? So it can self, put itself out? I would suggest there'd be some kind of system that puts it out, you know? It's the back. And I don't understand if the, if the, if the battery thing doesn't get there, does the solar system fail? I mean, can he, does it, does it go bankrupt? I don't know. Say, say if you don't get the battery storage unit, what happens to the rest of the project? Does it fail? If the state says, you know, is there funding involved or something like that? I mean, if the state says you got to have it and we don't, he doesn't get it, what happens?
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to come forward? No one else coming forward. Public hearing is closed at eight thirty-five. Mr. Carnavale, if you'd like, you could address any of the questions that were posed by the people that spoke in public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd first like to, I'd first like to respond to the question, very good question. What comes first, the chicken or an egg? Right, how do you get, his question was basically, if you don't have the battery, can you get the power to the grid? The answer is absolutely yes. We can. This is designed and approved by ISO, by Rhode Island Energy to put the energy to the grid directly from the solar array.
So you don't need the battery?
I do not need the battery. So, and then to the second person's question, if I don't have the battery, yes, the project's still viable. It will still work. The problem is, if the state of Rhode Island says I have to have a battery, that's, that's different from the, from the electrical question that you asked. I don't need a battery to make the solar, a solar array work, but I have, if they say I have to have a battery, then I have to have it. Otherwise, the project does die. And that's what I'm trying to manage, and that's why I'm trying to not come to you two months from now when I know what the battery's probably going to be and it's the first time you hear about it. This way I get your input and you see it and it's not a surprise. So that's, that's, that's why we took this approach, knowing that you're going to have a lot of questions.
One of the hurdles will be overcoming the ordinance. Banning the batteries to begin with because it was enacted for a purpose. That's going to be a hurdle.
There is a possible scenario where we would go forward, we would build this and interconnect it as a solar project and then try and add the battery later. The problem with that approach is that if we add a battery to the system, it's called a, this is called solar plus best, battery energy storage system. This is solar plus best, that's what this is called. We, our consultants have told us we may need different inverters if we have the battery. So I've got to make sure that whatever we design this with for just the solar array could accept a battery if I added it a year later or something like that. So let's say, for example, I went to the town and said, okay, circumstances have changed. I now need to have a battery with a solar project. You know, can you work with me on your ordinance? Or is there something in the ordinance that we can work on to try and solve it cooperatively? I don't know. But, you know, we're willing to, to work this through with you. And best thing for me is that state doesn't require it. That's what I'm hoping is going to happen. They don't follow Massachusetts down that road.
Joe?
Chairman, I see that as a major problem. I see that from what was described to us by the councilperson and also what is being described by the petitioner. Okay, the issue of the battery is going to be a question of state versus local governance. Okay? And that's going to be an issue that has to be addressed prior to any approval by this committee as far as I'm concerned. I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve that at this point in time in any way, shape, or form simply because we have an ordinance in place that bans batteries. State has done a lot of things over the last couple of years dealing with land management and building and everything else. And they're taking the, the ability of committees like ours to make local decisions that are best for our community. So as far as I'm concerned, that would be an issue that would be definitely off the table. As far as the, the array of panels is concerned, that's, that's not an issue that I'm talking about right now. I'm talking about the battery portion of this particular petition.
So in light of that comment and the other feedback we've been receiving tonight, which we do thank you for your thought and consideration for, unless Attorney Arisilo tells or instructs you that you would be violating any procedural rules of the boards, I would suggest that we would be willing to withdraw the portion of our requests and our master plan that consists of the battery storage site. And we still would like to ask for your approval on the other components this evening minus the battery storage.
And how about, how about the setbacks that indicated that you would work with our concerns about the setbacks other than fifteen feet? Is that the north part of, part of the property as shown on the diagram that abuts the existing solar array? And then fifty feet for everything, everything else?
Fifty feet for everything else. And I, and I do want to point out, I'll double check my zoning application, but I don't believe we ask for any relief on the south setback, where that's going to be the tree line extending into those parcels, so.
Some of the members might want more than fifty feet. What's the general impression?
I think just based on how remote this area is, I'm satisfied with fifty feet.
I would be also satisfied with fifty feet, given the fact that you've got the, the E site next door. The gentleman owns the property to the, to the one side. I don't see any major issue with that.
The property to the south, who owns that?
Mr. Davis.
This is in the middle of nowhere. I'd love to come up and see the site. But, yeah, I had no problem with it.
Catherine?
I just kind of feel that we should wait and do this all together as one.
You mean with the battery?
With not taking the solar and the batteries, separating them from-
I agree.
I think you have to separate the two to, yeah, because the solar in itself without the battery appears to be a good plan, in my opinion.
Yes.
And if they're willing to withdraw that, I think you could still have a, and the risk of the battery in the future is on, is on them.
Is that what you were saying, Catherine?
I was saying, I think we should just wait on the whole thing.
Waiting would allow us more time, perhaps, to resolve a conflict of laws issue that Mr. Reteller referred to between the state and the town.
You're under the gun. Refer us on that.
I can tell you, I can tell you that waiting, I'll tell you emphatically, would kill this project. By the time you get through-
Wait, how long?
I need to be in production, in construction in less than a year. And I need your, your approval so I can take the next step and the next step. And if I wait months, and we talk about resolving procedural issues between the state and the town, who knows how long that would take? So if we withdraw, it would be no difference than if we appeared here in front of you with just a solar application. And I think the consensus is that everyone seems to like the solar application. So we'll withdraw or table, I'm not sure what the right word is, the battery to give the state time to figure out what they're going to do, so then we can come back to you with a clear plan for the battery. And if you at that point reject it, that's, it is what it is, that's your prerogative, but we will still have met our timelines for the solar.
Okay. Any other comment for-
Mr. Chairman, I have one question of the town planner. On the recommendation that you made to the board, okay? Unless I have a, a earlier version of your opinion, this says the planning department is of the opinion that the conditions of the master plan approval have not been satisfied. Thus, the recommendation is for this, from this department, that, it goes on.
I think that's a typo.
I assume that's a typo. Okay, so, so can we, can we correct that and just take it out of there?
And so one other point with respect to that memo, the memo doesn't address the battery energy storage system. It wasn't actually outlined for a specific area to be discussed. So the memorandum is actually silent on that area. So I think with respect to this memorandum, it's really dealing with the solar array side because there wasn't really much, other than the proposal saying battery energy storage, the rest of it did not address it. And the correct word is they would, would be withdrawing the portion of their master plan application regarding the battery energy storage system.
Question on that, Attorney Arisilo, I mean to interrupt. Is there a process for tabling that for the time being? And I only ask that to avoid potentially having to start a pre-app again.
No, I don't think there is. You're going to, you'll come back at a later point with a master plan for best system.
Yeah. That was my understanding.
Because you're going to go where you want, master plan as soon as possible so you can get the preliminary on this solar plan and then final. So I think that'd be a separate thing. You can't table it because it won't be able to follow an approval tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a decommissioning plan?
Yes.
And what would that entail?
So every, we've done dozens of projects, all of the state of Rhode Island are required by the state, they're standard. And it basically requires that we either put money in a bond or in a checking account.
Okay.
And there's a calculation that says how much based upon the size of the system.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We've had a discussion. Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the master plan for the endurance clean energy solar array with no battery storage or equipment as part of that plan. Also, separating that, the confirmation of the FEMA flood zone changes would be part of future going forward. The zoning relief, the fifteen feet to northern portion, I think was-
And fifty for everything else?
And fifty for everywhere else. And was there anything else that anyone else had on that? Do you know about the, the bond for the decommissioning?
Variance of use.
The variance of use, of course.
The variance of use, thank you, Mike.
Variance of use.
Zoning variance of use.
Anyway, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Aye.
Three, you get the three? The ayes have it? Thank you. Next matter, appointment to the technical review committee. Chris, appointment, what's this appointment to the technical review committee?
I need one of the planning board members to be a member of the TRC to fill the void of the past.
Mr. Boyd previously held that position?
Yes, he did.
I'd be interested unless someone else is, I, I would be, I would like to, unless someone else is interested.
I don't think, okay. Have a motion?
Make a motion that member, you can be appointed.
We got a quick, a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? Last matter, public comment?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Aye.